I'd like to call the Macomb City Council to order, please, if you'd please stand and join me in the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Justin Shu.
Present.
John Vajetzi.
Here.
Byron Chabaz.
Here.
Dave Dorsett.
Present.
Ashley Katz.
Here.
Don Nguyen.
Here.
Dennis Moon.
Here.
All present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Citizens wishing to address the city council or matters remain to the agenda of tonight's meeting will be limited to three minutes and are asked to be brief and concise in making their remarks. Comments have been, excuse me, submitted by mail or email will not be read aloud, but a copy will be provided to each member of the council and made a part of the minutes of this meeting. Does anyone wish to speak to the council under the public comment section of our agenda tonight? All righty, hearing none. Council before you is consent, agenda, and a motion is in order.
Moved to adopt as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a consent agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Shu.
Aye.
Vajetzi.
Aye.
Chabaz.
Aye.
Dorsett.
Aye.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Under unfinished business, item number one, consideration of an ordinance to authorize a special use permit to allow a large-scale solar farm at 850 South Ward Street here in the city. This will be second reading.
Thank you. The city of Macomb has filed an application requesting a special use permit authorizing a large-scale solar farm at 850 South Ward Street here in Macomb. That property is located within the city limits. Upon receipt of the application, we scheduled a public hearing for April 9, 2025, served the required written notices of that hearing, published notice of the hearing in the community news brief, and posted a sign at the subject property. On April 9, 2025, at 5:15 PM, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the application, and following that public hearing did vote eight to zero to grant the special use permit and has recommended that council approve the issuance of the special use permit. If authorized, the ordinance provides that the subject property would be granted a special use permit, authorizing a large-scale solar farm at 850 South Ward Street, subject to the following conditions: that the project be constructed in accordance with the site and construction plans submitted and approved by the city of Macomb, and that landscaping on the site be maintained in accordance with the approved landscaping plan. The Office of Community Development would also be authorized to issue that special use permit and to update the city's official zoning map accordingly.
Thank you. That'll stand as first reading. A motion is in order.
Make a motion to authorize a special use permit to allow a large-scale solar at 850 South Ward Street in Macomb.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? This is for our own purposes there. Is that correct, Scott?
Correct.
All righty. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vajetzi.
Aye.
Chabaz.
Aye.
Dorsett.
Aye.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Shu.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, consideration of an ordinance to amend portions of Chapter Four of the city's municipal code concerning the sale of alcoholic beverages. This will be second reading.
Thank you. The city has authorized by the Illinois Liquor Control Act to establish regulations and restrictions upon issuance of liquor licenses within the city of Macomb. The mayor and city attorney are recommending to council for its approval amendments rather to Chapter Four. Those amendments are set forth in the exhibits attached to the ordinance. If adopted, the ordinance provides that council desires to concur with that recommendation, which was also recommended by the General Government Committee to amend portions of Chapter Four of the Macomb Municipal Code, and those amendments are set forth in Exhibits A and B attached to the ordinance.
Thank you. That'll stand as second. Renew motions in order.
Motion to adopt the ordinance to amend portions of Chapter Four, sale of alcoholic beverages.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? And this has to do with video gaming. And what else?
We are reconsolidating the Class C and the Class F into one license, and also this increases the Class V to ten to allow a current license holder to be compliant with our new Class V that was not in existence at the time that they originally received their license.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Chabaz.
Aye.
Dorsett.
Aye.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Shu.
Aye.
Vajetzi.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you. There is no other unfinished business this evening. Under new business, item number one, consideration to approve an application submission to the Pella Roll Screen Foundation for the Macomb Police Department to undertake some window replacements at their building there. This had discussion at the General Government Committee in the middle of last month. We also had some discussion at the committee the whole last week. The chief is here, Jessica's here. Jess, you want to remind us what we're up to today?
Yes. Good afternoon. Good evening. We are seeking funding from the Pella Roll Screen Foundation for window materials and installation, but our application would be remaining open-ended to allow flexibility for partial funding or product-only support. We are asking for the 22 severely deteriorated exterior windows at the Macomb Police Department facility to be replaced. The building is over 30 years old now and serves multiple critical functions, including the Macomb Police Department, the McDonough County Sheriff's Office, the 911 dispatch center, and evidence and storage. The existing windows are predominantly non-operational, permanently sealed, and negatively impact safety, energy efficiency, and functionality of the facility. The cost estimates for the windows, if we were to get the vinyl windows, they are approximately $73,533 with installation, and then if we went with the fiberglass windows, they're approximately $88,334 with installation. The police department has allocated $30,000 from its existing budget to help fund this project should partial funding be received.
Thank you. Entertaining a motion to approve that application submission.
Make a motion to approve the application submission for the Pella Roll Screen Foundation for the Macomb Police Department window replacement.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the application. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Dorsett.
Aye.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Shu.
Aye.
Vajetzi.
Aye.
Chabaz.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Jess. Item number two, consideration to approve an application submission to the Performing Arts Society Community Arts Grant for a downtown sculpture exhibit in the city's downtown. This had some discussion also at the Community Development Committee, middle of last month or so, and some discussion in the committee the whole last week. Savannah Ballard's here to go over any questions you may have. Savannah, do you have anything to add from our previous discussions? All right. Entertain a motion to approve that grant submission.
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant submission. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Shu.
Aye.
Vajetzi.
Recuse.
Chabaz.
Aye.
Dorsett.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. There is no other new business this evening. Any committee reports? Hearing none. Automatic reports. Alderman Moon, sir.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
No report.
Alderman Katz?
No report.
Alderman Dorsett?
Well, I'll jump out there.
Okay.
It's been a long time here, and a lot of those years were spent with Dennis Moon, and I'm happy to have done that most of the time.
Would be fun if we agreed all the time.
I was here when he sat out there and said I didn't know what I was talking about, and now it's nice to have him on the side occasionally letting me think I do, so it's been great, Dennis. Thank you.
He's learned.
Thank you. Alderman Chabaz?
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Vajetzi.
I will echo Alderman Dorsett. It's been a great pleasure working with Alderman Moon. I learned a lot from him, some good, some bad, but I did learn a lot from him. We didn't always see eye to eye, but we always made sure that we're making sure that Macomb was the first and foremost on our thoughts. Second thing is, this coming weekend is some graduation. WIU is graduating. Following weekend, Macomb High School. So congratulate all the students out there and tell them they've done an outstanding job.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Shu?
No report.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anything?
Just to echo the Alderman, Dennis, I'll miss you sometimes, like they said, but we could always count on you to say no most of the time, but for good reason, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Madam's attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Coker?
No report, your honor.
All righty, if you'll, there are no mayoral appointments, and if you'll allow me a trip to the podium, we'll have some more information to share. I won't ask you to stand up, but I do have a moment. No, 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 please. This is to honor you. Dennis.
I don't hear anymore either.
I will speak up loudly. Dennis, as you well know, you and I served on that side of the DS for several years before I became mayor. I've always appreciated your viewpoint, some more times than others, but I know at the end of the day, you were driven by a sincere motivation to do the very best for the people that elected you. And we cannot say thank you enough. Over the last 22 years, you have been a vital part in making Macomb a better place. So I'd like to present you a plaque, and in celebration of your retirement, I so to speak, from the city council, it's awarded to you as Alderman from 2003 to 2025, in recognition of your valuable, loyal, and dedicated service given to the citizens of Macomb. What sincere thanks, Dennis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Signee, die.
Same as you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Shu.
Aye.
Vajetzi.
Aye.
Chabaz.
Aye.
Dorsett.
Aye.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. With that, you get a two for tonight. You can stay for the second meeting, but this meeting is over. I'd like to call the Macomb City Council to order, please, and I would ask those duly elected at the last municipal election to join me at the podium to be sworn in. All righty. We will do each of you individually, and if you're ready to proceed, we'll begin.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrea Henderson.
I, Andrea Henderson.
Have been duly elected to the Office of Treasure. In the city of Macomb and the county of McDonough. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Treasure as set forth by the Illinois Code to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Madam Treasure. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Vajetzi.
I, John Vajetzi.
Having been duly elected to the Office of Second Ward Alderman in the city of Macomb and the county of McDonough. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Mr. Vajetzi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice paper.
You're welcome.
Could you please raise your hand and repeat after me? I, Ashley Katz. Having been duly elected to the Office of Fourth Ward Alderman in the city of Macomb.
Is it wrong? Oh, I'm so sorry. Replacing Dave.
Having been duly elected to the Office of Fifth Ward Alderman in the city of Macomb and the county of McDonough. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jennifer Hemingway. Having been duly elected to the Office of Alderman at Large in the city of Macomb and the county of McDonough. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Mrs. Henderson.
Thank you. All right. Do we want a group picture now? For the media at all? Now? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you join me up here, please?
Can we take a group picture of all of you recently, and where would you like us?
Facing you?
Facing.
I'm a bookend.
All right. Well, it was an internal one.
I thought that was funny. Seeing if he was awake. Seeing if he was paying attention.
All righty, if we could ask you to please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you remain standing, I would ask Reverend Alan Henderson from the Mount Calvary Church of God in Christ if he would please come forward to the podium. He's used to a rostum similar to that, and offer a moment of prayer or reflection, please.
Yes. First of all, they gave me free way to work, so I'll be taking an offering afterwards, so. Next is, I always say that whenever I pray or speak, I have to look away from my wife, so as beautiful as she is, let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to stand before you today, Father God. God, we ask that you touch this community, that you touch our nation, that you touch our government today, Father God. Put ahead your protection upon them right now today, Father God. We ask that you lead them, guide them, direct them, Father God. We ask, Father God, that there be no division among them, that there be all yea yea or nay nay, Father God, using wisdom and understanding in all they say and all they do. Father God, we ask right now, Father God, that as they go forth right now, Father God, that there be a building for this community, Father God. There be a representation for this community, Father God. Put ahead your protection upon this community, Father God, upon this county right now, upon this government, and upon these officials right now today. Father God, let them be led by the Spirit with the understanding that you have upon them. And Father God, we claiming victory right now by the death, burial, resurrection of Jesus Christ. Say thank God and amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Justin Shu.
Here.
John Vajetzi.
Here.
Byron Chabaz.
Here.
Dave Dorsett.
Present.
Ashley Katz. Don Nguyen.
Here.
Jenny Hemingway.
Present.
All present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Under new business, item number one, consideration to adopt a resolution for the water supply purchase agreement between the city of Macomb and the city of Colchester. You were provided with a copy of the agreement. Ms. Scalf, could you, or Scott, either one, could you go over what we're hoping to accomplish here, and then we have a resolution we need to read into the record?
Sure. Just over 20 years ago, there was a new water main extended to Colchester, and so there was agreement with that. That agreement is about ready to expire, so this is a new agreement for 20 more years. The previous one had all the construction language in it, so this one is much simplified. And essentially, the city of Colchester will pay the same rate as everyone else in the city of Macomb.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Scott? If the city attorney with the resolution, the record, please.
Thank you. The resolution provides that the city is a municipal corporation operating under the laws of the state of Illinois, that we own and operate a municipal water utility system, and we do have the capacity to provide that service to neighboring communities under the terms and conditions acceptable to the city. The city of Colchester is requested to continue receiving in this service, and the city has agreed to the execution of a water purchase agreement that is provided and attached as Exhibit A. If adopted, the resolution provides that the mayor and council would approve the water purchase agreement that is attached as Exhibit A and would authorize the mayor to execute that agreement, and the city clerk to attest the agreement both on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt a resolution for the water supply purchase agreement between Macomb and Colchester.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the agreement. Any discussion? So 20 years, 2045. Mr. Shu will still be here. Any other discussion? We'd, roll call, please.
Shu.
Aye.
Vajetzi.
Aye.
Chabaz.
Aye.
Dorsett.
Aye.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Hemingway.
Aye.
Seven.
Motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, consideration of an ordinance to authorize a rezoning of 303 East Calhoun Street and 333 East Calhoun Street in the city of Macomb, McDonough County, Illinois, from M1 Light Manufacturing to B2 General Business. This will be first reading.
Thank you. The Macomb Area Economic Development Corporation, as the applicant and petitioner, has requested a rezoning of parcels located at 303 East Calhoun Street and 333 East Calhoun Street, both here in Macomb. Both are described as set forth in the attached Exhibits A and B. Current zoning for both is M1 Light Manufacturing. The proposed zoning for both will be B2 General Business. Upon receipt of the application, the Office of Community Development scheduled a public hearing with the Planning Commission on April 23, 2025, provided written notice of that public hearing, published notice of the public hearing in the community news brief, and posted a sign on the subject properties. On April 23, 2025, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and voted seven to zero to approve the application and recommends that council approve the rezoning as well. If adopted, the ordinance provides that the zoning of the subject properties which are described in the Exhibits A and B would be modified from M1 Light Manufacturing to B2 General Business. And the Office of Community Development would be authorized to update the city's official zoning map accordingly.
Thank you. That'll stand as first reading. I would note for the record, the petitioner has their representative here this evening, and Ms. Pierce, the executive director of MadeCo, and that will plan on placing it on the agenda for next week's committee the whole meeting for further discussion. Item number three, consideration to award a bid to Visu Sewer Missouri LLC in the amount of forty, excuse me, $441,528.60 for the 2024 improvement of the sewer and rehabilitation. This is a lining project. There's a memorandum in your packet from the Public Works Director, Ms. Wartman. Could you go over the plan here, please?
Good evening. We opened bids last week for the annual sewer lining project. We're a little late on the 2024 because it took DCO a little while to approve our grant, but we are able to use $250,000 grant from Senator Halpin for this project. For the first time, we had more than one bid, or first time since I've been here, more than one bid. We had four. One was not responsive, but the other three were, and Visu Sewer was our low bid at $441,528.60. So we're looking for approval to enter into a contract.
Very good. Any questions for Alice? And as she noted, this was budgetary earmark that we received from the Capitol bill from Senator Halpin's office. We entertain a motion to award the bid in the amount listed as $441,528.60.
Make a motion to award the bid to Visu Sewer Missouri LLC, amount of $441,528.60 for the 2024 CIPP sewer rehabilitation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vajetzi.
Aye.
Chabaz. Dorsett.
Aye.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Hemingway.
Aye.
Shu.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Alice. Now you're going to stay up for the next item. Item number four, consideration to authorize an employment agreement between Megan Pittman to operate and manage the Glenwood Pool for summer 21, excuse me, 2025. You were provided a copy of the proposed agreement. Alice, could you go over that for us?
Yes. It's time to open the pool again, and Megan, despite her new job at West Prairie, has agreed to come on and be the manager again for the pool this summer. There's no change to her agreement from last year as far as duties or the hourly wage that we'll be paying her for this summer. So she does a great job at staffing, lining up lifeguards, events, private parties, lessons. Lessons have really taken off. So it's been, it's been pretty good for this pool, what she's been able to do as far as bringing business in. So I'm looking forward to another season.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Wartman, Alderman Vajetzi?
I will also concur. Ms. Pittman has done a great job. We're very fortunate that we have a number of vendors in town that have taken over to run, whether it be the park or the pool, whatever, and have done outstanding jobs. So it's great to see that she's coming back even with working at the school district to be able to come back and help us out.
Yeah.
Very good. Anyone else?
My stomach dropped when she announced that she had just gotten that job. I'm like, oh, no.
Anyone else? We entertain a motion to enter into the agreement with Ms. Pittman for the management of spring, excuse me, Glenwood Pool for the summer of 2025.
Make a motion to authorize employment agreement with Megan Pittman to operate, manage the Glenwood Pool for summer 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Chabaz.
Aye.
Dorsett. Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Hemingway.
Aye.
Shu.
Aye.
Vajetzi.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Alice, for overseeing that. Counsel, we would like to call an executive session to consider information relative to the employment, excuse me, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of an employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body pursuant to Section 2C1 of the Opening Meetings Act, and for collective bargaining matters between the public body and its employees or relatives or deliberations, excuse me, representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to Section 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act. And number for the setting of a price for sale or lease of property. No, that's not it. It is?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The sale or lease of property. The sale or lease of property owned by the public body pursuant to Section 2C6 of the Open Meetings Act.
And number five.
And number five, too, while we're at it. We're just getting about it all mixed out here. Pending or probable litigation pursuant to Section 2C11.
Motion to executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Hearing, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Hemingway.
Aye.
Shu.
Aye.
Vajetsi.
Aye.
Shabazz.
Aye.
Dorsett.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion carried. We will have something coming out of our discussion, and it will not be as long as we may be indicated by that list of exemptions. Entertained a motion to go back into open session.
Motion to return to open session.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to return to open session. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion is carried. We're back in open section. Counsel, we're on item number five of the agenda, and that's consideration to authorize a ratification of collecting bargaining unit between firefighters, local number 3053, and the City of Macomb. There's a copy, you have been provided a copy of that proposed agreement. Ms. Scalf, or Scotty, the one, want to go over the provisions and what detail we feel we need to do?
So this is a renewal of the union contract with the fire department employees for a three-year contract with a proposed 4% increase, COLA increase each year. And then also, there's a stipend in there as long as we're providing a driver for the medical service here in Macomb.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Coker? Right, we entertain a motion to authorize a ratification of that agreement.
Make a motion to authorize a ratification of collecting bargaining agreement with firefighters, local 3053.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to ratify the contract. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dorsett.
Aye.
Katz.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Hemingway.
Aye.
Shu.
Aye.
Vajetsi.
Aye.
Shabazz.
Aye.
All ayes.